Number one A, ordinance number seventeen dash oh eight, an order to amend the Dalton County Code of Ordinance, Chapter eight, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article three, established in the Building Inspection Code, Enforcement Department, Appendix A, permit fees to include an electrical reconnect fee and establish effective date of this order, second reading. I call the order, invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Douglas, there is the invocation. Mr. Bryan, we do the pledge.
I applaud you for your attention. Most holy and everlasting Father, we want to thank you, Lord, for last night rest and the favor it took to awaken and love this morning. And Father God, we asking you to come into this building. We asking you to touch each and every one, oh Lord. Father, we know that you are the one and there is none other. Father, we asking you there, oh Lord, to go with the one that could help attend and then not the two. And Father God, we asking you to make it go to the homes, the hospitals, wherever the sick is, oh Lord. Father, we know that you are the one and there is none other. And Father God, don't forget about our boys, girls, men and women's that's foreign country. And Father, if you did what you wants to do, I want you to give us a home and do a great kingdom now forever, Lord.
To me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Citizens of Congress. Would have had those citizens come in, correct?
Yes, correct.
Personal appearances. Before we get started, I hope that what is, I got the personal appearance, got her letter explaining the rules that we're gonna follow from here on out. I guess, uh... Alright. Mister Everett A. Samuel.
Mister Chairman, I apologize for last month that I was so present, took up too much time. Mister Cox, I thank you for copying me on the letter that was sent to the developer and, uh, and Mister Charles for contacting me as to no response from the developer. And which I don't see why you should contact me in regard to the situation when the letter specifically said, "Contact Mister Cox." Mister Chairman, you know, I currently last month, for the last couple of months, and I'm still not at a point that anything is really, is taking place and being done. I know the letter is sent to Mister Hall, uh, to the developer, uh, for them to contact you and there was no response. I have checked with local councils, I mean developers, I mean counties around, like communities, and then I don't understand from last month, uh, meeting, that I was told that nothing is set in place to set the bomb behind developer to make sure that their codes over there, for the county, where they're containing permits, you know, from the county. And the development is out of code, that water, rainwater is flooding our homes. And his ditches is out of code, which should be in the codes and within respect of the county. And the county approves the, uh, plan for development and the rainwater. Development was developed back in two thousand and three. Uh, homeowners up to that point has been obtaining water. For some reason, I don't know why, they haven't been, uh, complaining to support. I have had a modification where I contacted developer about the rainwater and the ditches, uh, in October, that I can give you a copy, uh, of that. Prior to that, I contacted developer about offense to have approved when you end up, uh, development and supposedly a homeowner association, which the home association established here. This developer gave me approval and write, in regards to that, in July of twenty sixteen. But October twenty sixteen, he declined himself, I haven't any responsibility of that, I'll be gone for. And I don't understand, at one month, two months later, or three months later, he has nothing to do with this development. I just moved here, I've only been here for a year, and I attained this situation. I'm out built and living in that development and grief, behind codes that wasn't followed through. My steps is coming legally to my councilor and to my county about this situation. I don't want to have to take other steps beyond that. But I expect from my county to resolve this issue of being out of code by developer. When the developers should be following code of the county and expanding.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, to the board. Board, Chairman, good evening. I'm here today to represent my neighbors, uh, to know the roads, out there's roads, and that's the business, totally worn and, and touch your waters. We have a great problem. And we've tried to get this great problem done for years.
Mister Chairman, point of order. Under our rules, uh, nothing is supposed to be put on the agenda that doesn't fall under our jurisdiction until such time as the administrator tells us that we need to take a look at it and the agreed party has met with the administrator, I feel this is out of order.
I have, I have discussed it with him, and it is under state jurisdiction. Mister Richardson's here. Do you have anything different than this is state jurisdiction?
No, sir, I don't.
No way, this is county jurisdiction, drains, no county property, no county road.
That's correct.
No county roundywards.
That's correct.
Could I say this?
Mister Chairman, point of order, I believe it's out of order.
So it's all, you don't have anything to do with it, uh, probably have to go back to the state and talk to these guys, uh, is that not correct, Charles? You said that we have nothing to do with it.
This would be totally under S C D O T's jurisdiction.
Oh, we, okay.
But what I'm gonna say, Chairman.
Yes, but we...
He says a lot of order.
Yes.
But the county was working with us, so...
If it was county, we did, but since it's a state, there's nothing under this.
They were, they were working with us.
State was?
The county was.
The county was asked to help the state, despite it was.
Prior to that, county said that they would clean those places.
Or the state right by it.
Must've been state, it wasn't us.
It wasn't me, I'm not, but, uh, so, I pray we can't hit it.
Mister Ronald Martin.
Good evening, Mister Chairman. Good evening, members of council, fellow members sitting around the table. Um, I come to you tonight, um, with a concern about EMS and with that concern...
Mister Chairman, point of order. Under our subsection F, it has to fall within the council's jurisdiction until such time as it administrator tells us that, that we need to review it, I feel it's out of order.
I'd be glad to meet with Mister Martin and discuss it and let you know if there's something that falls outside personnel and under jurisdiction at all. I can tell you about the matter, but I've not personally spoken with Mister Martin.
Mister Chairman.
You know, I, I couldn't hear Mister Stewart, can you repeat?
I said I have not personally spoken with you about the matter, so I do not know if it falls into the county, council jurisdiction of personnel matter under the administrator this time. So I'm just kinda answering his question of whether this is something that needs to come to county council.
I was gonna ask council for a subcommittee.
Mister Chairman's out of order. You address that, you've done a struggle.
Administrator, administrator, I mean, so, for us, we need to think before us, we need to let him speak.
Mister Chairman. It's out of order if, if, uh, a person wants to come speak in front of council on something he feels strongly about.
He has one that's not, uh, he need go through the county, one person.
Okay. He didn't do that by signing up to speak, that's personal appearance?
That's approved by the chairman of county council.
Is that what I heard?
Everything makes an agenda by the chairman of county council.
Okay.
Good, create.
But what, not approved?
If he's gonna speak about personnel matters, community creation, or any of that stuff, it's out, it's out of order as far as public information and what, it's not under our jurisdiction yet.
It comes under our jurisdiction, it, that, it comes under our jurisdiction when he says it is?
Exactly. Once he's made with this personnel issue, when he talks about EMS, that's come through me. I rather for Mister Martin to leave with Mister Stewart, and then, you know, it needs to come back and go.
Okay, just tell me what I need to do.
Meet with Charles. You'll settle for phone with Charles?
Do leave with me or genetic contact information, settle for time to meet.
Yeah, I'll have my contact information approved, maybe on the...
So this kind of, I'll contact you with that information.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, it's, uh, the same construction for Mister Goldwire. I know we discussed it.
What he's on, you, you ordered me. I already spoke with Mister Goldwire.
Yes.
Alright, let's move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as, receiving this information, item six A, six B, six C, six D, six E, and six F.
Second.
Any discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the votes, aye, aye. Approval of minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of regular meeting, July tenth, twenty seventeen.
Second.
Any discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the votes, aye, aye. Ordinance, A, ordinance number seventeen dash oh seven, an order to authorize the execution of delivery of construction credit agreements filed between Dalton County, South Carolina, and Project Phoenix, defined for the issuance of special stores, ready to be paid, another pattern related to their ticket.
Move the, move the approval.
Second. Second.
Any discussion?
Mister Stewart, are we prepared to report?
Yes, we are, and as Frank has, if not, Bill and Rick has something that's changed.
No change.
Nothing's changed by Project Phoenix, correct?
No.
Very good. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the votes, aye, aye. Eight B, ordinance number seventeen dash oh eight, an order to amend Dalton County Code of Ordinance, Chapter eight, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article three, established in the Building Inspection Code, Enforcement Department, Appendix A, permit fees to include an electrical reconnect fee and establish effective date of this order, second reading.
Where are the approval?
Second. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
I would ask Mister Stewart, question about the ordinance. The electrical charge, is that my understanding, I don't know if, if there wasn't, uh, it says it here, we're accepting too much liability, is this just...
We have always surrounded county or city that was completely reconnected the way they would be done. This process ain't comprised of the way they're done by local cities and counties. And the fee is within the range of, well, in Chesterfield, City Dalton, City Harson, because that fee is comparable to all the surrounding things.
But that takes care of the liability?
That takes the liability off. All we're doing now, we're coming, rather than just somebody calling up saying, "Hey, my power is disconnected for some reason, I just want to put it back on," or sending something to the utility, saying, "Put it back on." There at least going out, making sure that connection there, now not inside the residence or the structure, but at least that connection for the power company needs to come.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the votes, aye, aye. Order number seventeen dash oh nine, an order to amend Dalton County Code of Ordinance, Appendix A,标准令, Article two, Activity governed by the ordinance, section two, and three, glad approval. The coordination to require new block, and the rate that's set, to be right away on property, amusement to a public road, in order to find building, design, standard, section five dash eight, lock and parcel design, required to increase the number of blocks, all access and utility, must establish effective dates of ordinance, first reading, no action taken. Eight D, ordinance number seventeen dash ten, an order to amend ordinance number seventeen dash oh two, Dalton County, apply seventeen, eighteen budget ordinance, or supplement appropriation to the library fund you receive, and extend, and additional seventeen dollars, one ninety-one state aid, for Dalton County library system, establish effective date of this order, first reading, no action taken. Eight B, ordinance number seventeen dash eleven, an order to amend Dalton County Code of Ordinance, Chapter ten, business, Article three, hospitality tax, add a section, establish tomorrow local hospitality tax, local hospitality tax, on sale, and prepared, real, and ravage, sold, operational limits, of town, tomorrow, Dalton County, first reading, no action taken. Resolutions, abnormal, committee reports, and other items. Form us to boards, committees, committee, Mr. Douglas. Carry over. Mister Thomas, hand us the mission.
Mister Chairman, I want, um, Mister Thomas, say so, is, is, about hammer, that's the mission.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the votes, aye, aye. Mister Tucker, carry over. Mister Flowers?
Carry over.
Mister Nixon? Mister Wright? Mister Coke?
I wanna, this, this says I need to appoint one for the parks regulation, but I just wanna read Mark. I don't own that information, who did this?
Who's that?
Same guy that's on it, it just hasn't attended meetings. I spoke with him, and he still wants to be on.
Okay. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the votes, aye, aye. A form to the courthouse construction advisory committee, physically, physical disability representative. Chairman, touch it. I have nobody at this time, so just carry that over. FY seventeen, eighteen, employee assistant program service contract with group Todd family, counseling service, two thousand and five hundred dollars.
Two fifty-four.
Second. All the favors?
Aye.
All the votes, aye, aye. Eleven D, contract with Dalton County, you may decide to operate Dalton County, have a little shelter. Motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a question, uh, this contract is fully funded within our seventeen, eighteen budget.
Right, the only change is from last year's contract, the dates of seventeen, eighteen, and the new funded amount with the changes that made in the budget. Only one of the verb is changed.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the votes, aye, aye. Memorandum of agreement for the detention of juveniles. Motion.
Move to approve a memorandum.
Any discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the votes, aye.
Don't have anything for you. We'll mention one item we have been working on in the past, the employee directory, that request one of council members, and we'll try to get some finished up for y'all to look at, a format of employee directory for y'all's purposes and the public's purposes, um, to be able to contact people and find the right people. A little easier than you can go to the website and navigate and look for individuals that might have specific responsibilities the public will need to contact.
Request, comments, members of council. Kill gun?
No.
Thomas?
I'd just like to say I thank you all, county, for sending me to the government retreat. I mean, it was really awesome, it was very uplifting, and I also would like to thank the bishop for all her hard work and professionalism, dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's. She was really sensational, didn't have to ask anybody any questions, so, I mean, that was great. And I appreciate that, and thank you all very much. And I, I look forward to attending. I mean, that's it, sir, yes, sir.
I'd just like to echo Mister Thomas's comments, that, uh, it was a very informative meeting for those that not, uh, studied the history of South Carolina, understanding our relationship with Columbia. Uh, but, uh, it was very, I thought, well attended by the council members and informed as well. I do have a question, Mister Stewart, about, uh, the opinion workshop date, did that?
That's August the twenty ninth, and the exact time has not been set by Mister Weathers yet, but probably starting somewhere between nine thirty and ten, and, um, the first thirty minutes or so is really gonna be a welcoming point where he just talks to, you know. If any of y'all would like to meet with him prior to that August twenty ninth date, um, he'd be glad to do that, but you'd have to let me know you want to sit down and talk to him prior to that. But lunch will be served at that, at that particular event, and probably about the end of the week, a schedule of how he plans to lay that out for the day will, will have that for you. Um, we have not heard back on the desired location yet. Probably gonna be tough on August twenty ninth to get that location, if not, the cog would probably be our alternative location. And all that should be finalized by the end of the week.
I want to ask council if it'd be alright to ask Mister Chavis or his representative to give us a little overview of why we need a memorandum for detention of juveniles? A lot of people, we know it because we get the package and we've dealt with it before, but a lot of people wonder why do we have this expense for juveniles and y'all with adults?
I appreciate the counsel, flowers. I mean, a little unprepared to dress yet all, but, uh, just shooting off the cuff.
Huh? Get a cheat? Make him do something? Um, and Charles, you may be able to jump in on any of this stuff.
Department of Juvenile Justice, we, our facility here, the Green County Detention Center, we cannot house a juvenile here. So we have to seek the state's help, and they have Department of Juvenile Justice, and for that, we have to pay, send our juveniles that we arrest, whether it's the cities, uh, or us, the insurance office that make an arrest, they have to be transported to Columbia and held. Uh, whether we arrest them or family court commits them and says, you know, you're going to DJJ for six months. We have, that's one of our residents, and we have to pay the house up there. Just like we house a federal inmate here, or federal government, they have to pay to house them. At the detention center.
If we arrest them, what kind of timeframe are they allowed to stay in our custody before we have to be transported?
No.
We said no, I mean, sure, there's a little time.
If we arrest them, as soon as they, they get, all the paperwork and stuff done, they're going to...
So, once they're in the backseat, they're not getting out of the backseat?
Once our investigators or hearts full of dogs of the mares, society hill finishes up everything that they've got to do on this end, they're gonna be housing Columbia. They're not gonna let their heads over here, no.
And that's a more cost-effective method, and that's trying to beat separation segregation and different route with the house.
It would come in here, lock there.
Yeah, all the old sites down.
Yeah, it would cost us a lot more.
Is Mister Gobden still here? Is Mister Gobden used to be with you, with you, with that, because?
That, that's what, a lot of folks just don't understand that what it takes, that, that they don't get out of, they don't go inside that building if they're a juvenile.
That's it.
I mean, it's not, so it's, sometimes you have officers who just finished up a shift, who said, "Look, we got a juvenile, he's gotta be..."
Can't be transported with an adult, can't be housed with an adult here. So we have to take them along.
And what kind of offense? Any kind of offense that you arrest?
I mean, you, you think about, family court judge say, "Yeah, you been, I'm trying in school, I'll send you to DJJ for six months." Trying to send you to DJJ. They don't have to be, you know, a varsity...
Some misdemeanors, just so.
Family court judge says you going to the club, you, we're gonna take you with lungs. You know? Some things can be minor, some things we can write tickets forward and send a juvenile home, release to custody, and then, and we can, but there's certain things that we can't. I mean, take a piece of pie for somebody, yeah. So you want to check.
Is that, just adding, is that your discretion to, where you go?
We follow statute.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I mean, if, if it's a minor offense, that we can write a ticket forward and turn it over to a legal guardian or parent, we'll do that. And if, one, because it'll save, it saves us money. Um, but there's certain offenses, it's just like with an adult, that you have.
Right.
You want to check.
Right, right.
Thank, thank you.
Yes. Give us a spot.
Truancy, this circuit, four circuit, I think, is the only one in the state of South Carolina that sends juveniles to jail.
What choice?
The school district and the solicitor's office is participating in sending children to jail, and that's, this is the only circuit, I believe, that does that. Everybody else does it by way of schooling, handles it within the school system. And of course, when they go to Columbia, it's not the school district paying fifty, is it still fifty?
It's, it's, it's according to the bank.
Forty thousand dollars a year, fifty dollars a pop.
Okay.
Fifty dollars a day.
You know, another surcy from the school district.
Then they have to pay the school resource office.
I think it's more, because people ask questions and it's like, yeah. They don't get the same information we do, or they don't know where to look for it, and they don't understand that it's not your choice, I mean.
So, you know...
State said, you will not have a juvenile and an adult offender in the same location? You can, you do everything that you can to make it...
You can't even transport them in the middle of the night. I mean, we're making arrests out here, an adult, uh, you know, kind of marijuana, he's got a juvenile in the car, can't be transported to jail with the adult in the car. They're gonna have to call separate unit to transport the juvenile, just turn that juvenile over to a parent or legal guard.
Chairman, you also have a problem with the fact of sex, is you really can't co-mingle a juvenile male and a juvenile female.
At the same time.
We don't know what they are.
I can comment on that, I guess.
It's transgender.
Wow.
Mister Minister, does we have to put all that deal?
I'm sorry, do I now?
Does we have to put all that deal about paying the...
Comes after the...
The sinners don't put, no?
Not at this time.
I thought we used to have to pay someone.
City not pay for their share.
Had to pay it all.
And he paid it all right now. We have to set, you'd have to set a policy, especially, budget time's the best time to do that, but you'd have to set a policy that you're no longer gonna pay the bill for the city's arrest.
Mister Chairman, yes. Put that down on the tickle list, and we, we, we'll remand that to the cities, and we'll remand the school district, truancy.
Put that down?
Make sure it comes, it's brought up when that time comes, it's coming.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Flowers.
That's all right.
Um, I, I, I have one, one, uh, issue that come to mind, and, um, I, there's a house that's, I think, a few doors from me, and, um, I'm in the South Harsville, outside area. And, um, this house had been advertised, um, with a fair market value price of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And I'm real concerned, because I don't know any home outside. That's where, where, where this house is, that's a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And that really concerns me, and I know that, um, it, well, it's being marketed, is that, by, uh, one of the brokers here that we're quite familiar with, but I do know that, that the broker has to take into consideration what we have been assessed on of the house. I don't know of any properties, as a matter of fact, I thought, I think at one time, my house was, which was my, my parents' homestead, was valued, uh, had eighty or ninety thousand dollars, and, uh, that, that had to be decreased because it was overbuilt for the area. And I'm, I'm really concerned, because I would not, um, care to think that if this house, if they're able to market this house as a hundred and ten thousand dollars, and to be honest with you, I think the most of this house, val, the value, the fair market value of this house shouldn't be any over sixty thousand dollars. And when you're talking about... And when you're talking about, um, a hundred and ten thousand dollars, that's a lot of money. I addressed it on Twitter, but I do want to, um, for us to find out, and not, I'll provide the address for the house, because it sounds, it sounds like right where I am. And, uh, we, we, this was, and what I'm concerned about is, this is what happened that caused the crash in two thousand and six, seven, that we faced, um, with houses, homes being financed far more than their value, which we, and, and we had quite a good home in the P D and the beach, because I worked on that, on that issue, through moving services, and come to find out, and my house was one of those golden sales house. So, I'm, and we think, I, I just don't want to think that the houses in, and, and sometimes my constituents double, overdouble the value of the crime, and I'll provide the county with that address, because I just can't see a broker just, you know, arbitrarily reaching up in the stock and saying that this house in the, in the high primary, we had, uh, three beds, was old house, built on concrete, hundred and, uh, advertising, and I, I don't think it was a hundred and ten thousand, but I think it was like a hundred and six or seven thousand, and that was reached. So, I want to, and, which is, our next meeting, prior to our next meeting, I'm going to give you that address, because I think you need to look at that, the assessment office needs to look at that. We don't want to experience what we experienced before, and heaven knows, we were hit hard in this town. It was just a well-kept secret, but many people lost their homes here, and, uh, as a result of being overvalued, and, uh, for what the property was worth. Now, that also concerns me, because we, um, and I know we had just, when was the last assessment, um, done? When was, when was our last tax assessment?
The next one will be twenty eighteen, was it?
No, but when was the last one? It was a few years ago, wasn't it? It hasn't been that long ago.
Fifteen or twenty sixteen.
I, I, I'm not quite sure, can you find that out for me?
We'll send.
Now, the reason I'm bringing that up is because a few years back, in my district over on the west side, the other side of Carolina Avenue, we had big problems out there, we had a lot of retired, um, a large, a considerable retired population out there. Most of these people are retirees from Sunoco and what have you, and, uh, one of our biggest concerns was, and, and Wesley and I, we really, we worked, it took us lots of working on that, but a lot of the people wanted to be annexed in to the city of Harpsville for protection, and, 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 and we worked with them in doing that, but we weren't able to, uh, be successful in helping them. We had this one woman, Diana Velucia, came before, and, and let me back up, we were told, and how Wesley was involved in that, because when, that they had, um, prior to my coming on to council, that my area had been gerrymandered, and, and corporate Sunoco, that part was, was bought into our district, South Harpsville, the city side, and south, and south side, the county side, and, um, we were told in trying to help these people, because these people, that portion of my district at one time was in Mr. Coke's district, and many of these people did not even know that they had been annexed, they had been gerrymandered into my district. But in any case, we worked to try to get some of the homeowners annexed into the city. Ms. Diana Velucia comes before council, and her property, we valued her, her property was valued at sixty thousand dollars, the house and the lot that we settled, and she got automatically annexed into the city. Now she's gone, from my understanding, and, uh, that's another side that I handle. But I think that, in that assessment, and with the planning, going through the planning and zoning, what the, what they, what she was afforded, and that was mainly to keep her quiet, and as it turned out, she really beat the county, the city of Harpsville, everybody, now she's gone, but that was not fair to the residents who are still living in my district. Um, and I, and I don't want to see that happen again, that's why I'm here, because we're, those properties, we need to know how they're being assessed, and thank God I was able to pick this up, because I, one thing I, I'm not seeing well, because I don't know if most of y'all are.
Chairman? Yes. Keep repeating yourself.
And, that's what I do sometimes, repeat, repeat myself.
Chairman, I don't think it's relevant.
Well, that's what you think, it is relevant, what I think is relevant, and that's important to me, because we're talking about the value of people's property, and people being treated fairly in, in our, in our camp.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? Yes. Uh, Ms., Ms. Nickson, Happy County Council, uh, affect people's value of houses when they're, we're not real estate appraisers?
We make an assessment on their property taxes, and we charge them, and we bill them, um, the tax, and based on the assessed value of their property, and I thought I made that clear, that we don't have control over the commerce, commercial aspect of, of the market.
That would've been an elected official named Ms. Rogers, who was the, that assessor.
Thank you.
So I think that, that issue dealt with her.
Yeah, what I'm saying, I'm making, I want to be vocal on this, is how time that we have, that there's some transparency in what's going on in the camp. I feel it very well, I feel, but in any case, I want that to be checked, and especially the house that's valued at a hundred, I think it's, I know it's over a hundred thousand, a hundred and five thousand, yes.
Make sure that they've done a proper assessment, a detailed assessment.
Because there is not one house in the hood where I am, high primary, south side.
Our assessment's just going to be the tax assessment, we can't make the realtor change on them.
No, I'm not saying the realtor change, I'll handle that otherwise, outside with my hat on, in a, in a lovely farm, but in terms of the assessed value and being fair to people, we need to put a stop to it. Thank you, I'm.
Um, I just got a couple things, nothing, uh, I, I just, I want to go back to this deal with, uh, Mr. Bowyer, just to educate myself. Um, I was just told by you guys that you needed to go through the administrator to be able to, have to be able to come up here and speak in a public forum, but he went through administrator.
He, he applied to put it to the clerk, and I did contact him about it.
So he was, he was, my, my problem is, the man took his time to come up here and speak, and as public officials, I thought, even if he doesn't speak out of context, which is hear what he says, if his time is valuable enough to come up here, along with Mr. Martins, come up here and speak, especially if he's already gone through administrator, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not busting anybody, I'm not, but if you know, all I'm asking is, if you know what he's talking about is not pertinent to us, let him know that.
I did.
Okay.
I explained it was state right of way, state work.
Okay, good, that's good enough, I'm glad, and I'm sure you did, much dealings that I've dealt with you, I'm sure you handled it effectively, but that's my point. My only point is, instead of telling these people that they can come to speak and they sign up, maybe we need to have a policy that we see what they're going to speak about, and explain to them that they may not be able to speak if it's not protocol, does that make sense?
I have no problem with that.
What was that?
I have no problem with that.
Okay, I just, maybe, maybe we need to have a system that lets them know when they send us an email, and say, okay, look, this is marginal, somebody may call to order.
Public consent to do was used, just like we hadn't been using the decor rules for a while, anybody that asks for a public appearance can evaluate it, talk to them, as long as they'll talk to me, then I can advise the chairman, if like this case, it falls under separate, not department transportation, and we have no jurisdiction.
All that's wonderful, just let him know, and like you said, you did, but just make sure he understands, if he comes, you're probably not going to be able to speak, because his time is valuable as mine, and that's just my opinion, you know what I'm saying? And, and, and Mr. Martin, in Mr. Martin's case, I know, I know it's been vocalized at the ambulance mission, all this, I understand the situation, and I've talked to both sides, before he said a word, he was told, we can't discuss personnel matters. He could've been talking about, the tires were flat on it, he said, my point, we need to hear these people and listen to what they say, in my opinion, and if it, if it falls out of jurisdiction, if I say the wrong words, I apologize, because I'm not a legal expert, but if it falls out of that jurisdiction, then we can tell them, but cut them off real quick, I just don't think that's good, just my opinion. That's all I got.
Why are the names on the list if they can't?
That's kind of what, that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Well, we haven't been fucking all that you have, Mr. Martin.
Because the county administrator can give his opinion, but you county council as a whole have to decide if you're going to override that and let him speak, and so that's the reason it's on that list, get up to have, have their say, you heard what the county administrator said, and you as a county council could have overruled that.
So, uh, just, just so I know, for future reference, when Mr. Mr. Kilgo said he's out of order, I could've said, no, I want him to speak.
You, you should've asked for a vote on it.
Vote on it. All right? I apologize whoever I didn't get to speak, I will next time.
Call it France, France.
All right, so, I appreciate people coming, spending their time, after they've done and, uh, good for us, if everybody has a safe trip home, right now, we're going to ask for the chairman, motion, whether.
Second.